So.
A motion of second?
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
This is public input, this is a time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda, if you have anything please come up to the mic. Hundred year anniversary of the League of Women Voters of Iowa. So, here we go. Whereas, the League of Women Voters of U.S. was begun on February fourteenth nineteen twenty as a nonpartisan organization to educate people about and to advocate for policy, issues, and positions, and to encourage informed and active participation in government. Whereas, the League of Women Voters of Lynn County, Iowa, was formed for these, for those same purposes. Whereas, the League of Women Voters of Lynn County works to influence public policy through education and advocacy, including but not limited to voter registration, candidate forums, legislative forums, program meetings, and state of city and county. Now, therefore, I, Jeff O'Connor, Mayor of Lisbon, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council do hereby recognize the hundredth anniversary of the League of Women Voters in the City of Lisbon, and encourage residents to pay tribute and respect to the League of Women Voters for all they do to make our community informed, vibrant, and strong. Presentation of summary of the CLG report to the Lisbon Historical Preservation Commission.
All right. Becky told me I need to be briefed. After all these years. So first of all, the historic preservation is part of city government through the CLG program, and we are required to submit a report, an annual report every year, that summarizes our activities and our membership, and talks about our goals and how we achieve them. New this year is the requirement that we have to present a summary of our annual report to the City Council, so that's why we're here tonight. So to start things off, we annually set our goals and we develop action plans to help us achieve those goals, and during two thousand and nineteen, we achieved all of the goals that we set out to achieve. We recently established our goals and our action plans for two thousand and twenty. They're quite lengthy and ambitious, but we don't see that as any problem meeting those goals because we go after it. Some of the highlights from two thousand and nineteen, first and foremost, we finished up work on that CLG grant that allowed us to designate the downtown commercial district to the National Register of Historic Places, and that was a huge undertaking. It involved about sixty people, it involved six hundred hours of volunteer work, it took us about eighteen months to do that, but we wrote a grant and the grant covered twelve thousand dollars of those costs, and the cost of the city was just about five hundred dollars. The dollar amount that we attached to the volunteer labor piece of that was in excess of fifteen thousand dollars. So it, it was quite an undertaking, but it was very successful. And then, the other really important and interesting thing that happened to our commission last year is that we were awarded the two thousand and nineteen more important Community History Award for Excellence in History, and this is an award that we share with the Lisbon United Methodist Church and with the Lisbon Inc. Business Class from the school. This is for the video, and I'm sure you've all seen, that showcases the history and the architecture of the Lisbon United Methodist Church. That, that was probably one of the most outstanding things that we did last year. It was really great because it involved other people, it wasn't, wasn't something that just we did just on our own. The other things that we worked on last year is, we're working really hard on the first of those two steps that we need to take to get the barns on the Nature Center property listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So we wrote a field services grant to the State Historic Preservation Office, and we were able to, we received that grant, we hired Leah Rogers to do an assessment of those buildings, and she has submitted her site inventory to the State Historic Preservation Office, and they are taking that under consideration right now. We haven't heard anything back from them, but once we determine, once we receive a notification of eligibility to the National Register, we will be able to move forward very quickly with the nomination piece of that, so that's the second piece, and we'll get the nomination written and submitted by June, and hopefully, that will be considered and designated to the National Register by the end of this calendar year. The buildings will not be individually listed, as, as is often the case, this is going to be a district, it will be called the Myers Farm District, so it'll be that cluster on the southeast corner, a cluster of buildings there. So we're hopeful that that will move right along, and we appreciate the support of the City Council with setting aside some money for that nomination piece. And there again, we wrote a grant, the grant covered about nine hundred and sixty dollars of Leah Rogers' work, so there was no cost to the city, and the match for that grant was provided by the Lisbon Historic Preservation Commission in terms of historic research and field work, so that, that's an update on that one. We also wrote two other field services grants, and these were both for city buildings, the library building and the History Center building. Those grants were also successful, they were funded, and we hired Doug Steinmetz to come in and do a professional assessment of both of those buildings. That assessment has been received for both of those buildings, and we're just waiting to see what the next steps might be in terms of that process. So those two grants totaled one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, and the cost of the city was seventy-five dollars for each of the grants, or a hundred and fifty dollars to cover travel and bringing in some of the reimbursement costs under those grants. So, the other thing I would mention is that we're in the ninth year of working with the Lisbon third grade class on special events and activities. These are outreach projects that help us celebrate National Historic Preservation Month. This last year in October, we also facilitated having the History on the Louvre mobile museum over at the school, and that was a very successful event, there were over two hundred students and teachers and aides who were able to view the mobile museum on that day. We've also worked really hard to increase our social media presence, so we have a website that was designed by a Lisbon Inc. student, that's up and running, and we also have our own YouTube channel. So we'll be uploading our videos to the YouTube channel as they, as they get produced. Speaking of videos, with the assistance of the Lisbon Inc. class, we produced two new videos this year. One is for, one relates to D and D Body Shop, and the other relates to Hills Bank and Trust, and we've got another one that is in the works right now. Our commission is very active in the state, and last year, our commission was asked to participate in a roundtable discussion at the state conference, which is called the State Summit. So Mary Ann Zahoric of our group attended, and she presented a poster, and she also helped lead a discussion relating to building relationships within the community. The other thing that we did last year, we just started this last year, am I running out a ton of... We just started this last year, is working with the Lisbon's Future Committee, as that committee works on the planning stages of the Iowa Great Places Grant. I'd like to say that we're in very good standing with the State Historic Preservation Office. They use our third grade activity and our connection to the school as an example to other commissions across the state, and they also selected our commission as a success story, and we are the only commission in the state of Iowa that received that designation, and they, they put together a flyer and they sent it to the National Park Service in recognition of the work that we're doing. So we had a busy year, we had a very successful year, and we see no reason to believe that we won't continue to move forward with some of these projects, and it's always helpful to know that the City Council backs us in, in what we're trying to do. If you want to see a copy of the full report, it's quite lengthy, but we can certainly make that available to you probably electronically, right Connie?
No.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but thank you.
Yeah, good job.
A lot of stuff on that, so congratulations, it's been really hard for you.
Awesome.
I'd like to leave you with our goals for two thousand and twelve, so you can see what we're up to. Sorry. Shouldn't have been this soon. There you go. Cool. Thank you. Do you have any other time?
No.
You're good?
Thank you.
Travis, want to grab it?
And, and this was.
What's it? Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, presentation of financial year twenty-one budget summary, you got an hour and a half.
Well, no, it'll take me five minutes.
The way I like your timeframe a lot better.
The public hearing will be at the next meeting, and you guys will approve the final budget at the next meeting, but I just wanted to go over a couple things, just in case we needed to make any additional changes. It came out with revenues exceeding expenditures by eighty-five thousand seventy-nine dollars, so we're doing good. I was able to incorporate the extra twenty-five thousand dollars that was asked for by the Police Department, eleven thousand dollars from the Fire Department, which would be ten thousand, would be half of the cardiac monitor that they're wanting to purchase. I did put in eighteen thousand dollars for building maintenance on the library, as you can see in the estimate that we were given, it came in close to a little over fifteen thousand. Twenty-four thousand extra for parking rack, which most of that would be from, for the splash pad, and some, and the rest of it would be taking the part-time position to a full-time. Nine thousand dollars for the comprehensive plan, which would be half of the cost of that. An extra twenty-three hundred for historic preservation, so they can continue the work on the barns and, and the rest of the buildings downtown. Twenty thousand for possible work that we might do on History Center West Wall, if we don't do that work, it'll just go back to the General Fund. Twenty-five thousand for a new pickup truck for the public works, and I did put in there an additional fifty thousand because I do think that it's time for the General Fund to start looking for another position. My contract is up at the end of December, and I will not be renewing it to be the city administrator. So I think we have ten months now to begin to look at that and make a decision and go from there. I will fulfill my contract to the end of December and do everything possible I can to help hire and renew somebody to take over. That's all I have on that.
So the money for the library, that library, so does that go to their fund or?
That would go into their building and maintenance fund, so we could either put it in there or take it out. We, just, library runs a little bit different than the other departments. We give, once we give the library money, they can use it as their board sees fit, so we have to make sure somehow that that money, if it's not used for that building, would not be used for something else. So, we could put it in the budget now, and hopes to do it, or we could not put it in, and then if it does come to a time where we are gonna fix the building, we could do a budget amendment. But like, the library runs under different rules on the other departments. We, you guys have a total say over what that money can be used for.
We have a say, we do have a say over that?
For the other departments, not the library. Like I said, we give the library money, and their board determines how it's spent.
And we can't designate it?
Not unless we put in a capital improvement fund to be used for that particular item.
And maybe that?
We could do that.
We just do the gap, I wanna make sure that...
'Cause I, I mean, I just don't get...
I don't, I don't think they do, but I could just, you know, they don't do that, and then they spend it on something else, and then come back next year and ask for it again, I mean, I just...
Let's just do diligence to make sure it's being spent, so it's budgeted for. I have a question and a comment. Does this budget include, like you said, the Fire Department's, oh, I'm sorry, the Police Department's twenty-five thousand, that included the money that they requested for their increase in salaries?
I changed, just to be, just to be careful with this, I did change all the salaries for the spreadsheet to five percent.
So everybody's in there with that?
So, yeah.
And if they don't get it, that's just...
It would still be you guys' decision at that time to, to determine the increases, but I did put in five percent just in case.
Okay. And then this last thing is just more of a comment, but you know, with Connie announcing that she's not renewing her contract for this next year, I have a lot of thoughts on it. But first and foremost, I would say to this council and mayor, we better, we better figure this out, we better figure it out pretty quick, because losing her will, it will really be a big detriment to the city, and I think that each of you should probably have a conversation and see if there's anything that you as a council member or mayor could do to make this not happen, because you owe that to the city in trying to do what's best for the city of Lisbon. So I would encourage all of you to have some type of a conversation in the next short time, to see what we could do to change that course of action.
I think also, we should probably consider maybe getting an outside source or something to determine the best, because we, we went from two positions to, well, three positions to two, and we were able to function like that, but I think in the future, you guys are gonna have to take a look at the possibility of going back to three positions, so, I don't know, there, I'm sure there's organizations out there that could come in and do a review, just to try to tell us, you know, what our best steps forward would be awesome, because I really think we, we're gonna need to go back to three positions more than I could. So, that's something we can discuss at a future time. I promise tonight's meeting was gonna be short.
How much is left over in, you figure for lost?
That we didn't plan on spending, probably a hundred thousand.
Travis, I wasn't here when Travis presented his budget, but I know they brought some of that salt solution down to you, are you looking into that next year?
Brian?
Right.
Brian?
We opted to go out of it, the cost to purchase the stuff it was gonna take to, to make it versus the salt savings wasn't adding up. Connie and I talked, we can purchase it from Mount Vernon if we decide we want to go to that, but right now, I don't, I think we're better off just still using our salt that we're using, and then just add, like, once we do Highway thirty, you know, lighten it up with sand, like what the state does now, so.
We would partner with Mount Vernon for them to brine our streets?
No, we just buy the brine. Yeah, yeah, we just purchased it from, if that's what we...
And the brine is a treatment, like a pre-treatment?
Yes, yeah.
So do you think it would be a good, I mean, I'm just looking, Highway thirty?
Each storm's different.
Exactly. Well, we were supposed to get ten inches of snow, yes, early, we come tonight, as of tomorrow.
It's not over yet.
Right? That's what I'm saying, I'm like, now we're supposed to get a trace. So I'm just thinking, you know...
With, with that, without...
Is that what your guys are thinking, though, is when they are calling for a big storm, to maybe get it from Mount Vernon for Highway thirty? Because obviously, Highway thirty is our biggest.
Right. Temperature judges all that for us. Without naming a name, I've talked to a couple different individuals, and they don't think that it's been beneficial for the money that they put in.
Sure.
So, like I said, I've said all along, this is gonna be a trial and error for us, I don't wanna walk by a bunch of equipment, and if they do brine on their side and we don't, then that will show, you know, whether it worked or not, and I don't wanna, and that's kinda...
But they're using brine on their side now?
Yes, well, they will be.
They will be, okay.
Well, and I feel like, before bypass, it probably had some value, because there was a lot of traffic out there, but the traffic has slowed quite a lot.
Right.
And so I'm not sure that it would be worth the cost either.
And temperature does, I mean, everywhere you read, it's all the temperature, and if we have cold winter with lots of snow, brine's not gonna do us any good anyways, so, like I said, we're, we're learning, we're all gonna...
We'll let them take the cost and test it out. We'll learn from them.
Anybody else have any questions for Connie about the budget? What did, so what was the number for, for property value or property taxes?
The rate?
Twelve thousand, eleven point six.
Eleven point six-two. Which, for the record, it did go down again, so everybody knows. It did not go up.
Britta?
What was it last week?
She did bring it up.
I did, didn't I?
She did bring it up. And I did put a chart, you guys were asking at the last meeting about, well, maybe not you guys, but other people were asking you about where our tax dollars go, so I did put a chart in the packet.
Yeah, he had a whole thing of the last twelve, twelve years.
Yeah, and then the pie chart that I put in there, where you could see the percentage of where the taxes actually go, so you, you have that information if somebody asked you, because I've been asked several times, and Margaret has it also, so.
Do you have any else to, Connie?
Remind me now, then, what's next? We...
We have to hold a public hearing at the next meeting, yeah.
And then, when do we start doing, like, all the evaluations and deciding all the...
The union contract, we start in April, and it'll be effective July first.
And who does that?
Travis is the only union person that has voting power, so it'll be between him and I, and then we usually sit down with the personnel committee and, and Mark, and go over anything that they've requested. So that will, so that'll begin in April. Travis did say he got a phone call from the union rep today, so I probably got wanting to start that process. And then the employee evaluations are usually done in June, and then the new rates become effective July first.
I don't know if this is the time to talk about it or not, or maybe it's something that needs to be put on the agenda, but I have, I'm wondering, you know, last year, Rick came in here and he said that he wanted to give a three percent raise to his group because they had done such a great job, and then obviously, we had other people who had done a great job too, and it stands to reason that they would all get it. My question is, do we have to do it blanket like that? Can we take each individual person?
No, you can do it individually. The union requirement right now is that they have, you have to give them at least a two percent up. And I think we had talked about that before, but I don't think, we all did the evaluations, but I don't think you guys actually reviewed any of the evaluations, so I would like, I'd like to see that implemented work.
And that's what I wanna know, is how council feels about looking at each individual employee and giving them their raises based on their own merits, rather than just lumping everybody into one?
It's, it's hard for us to know individual performances, though.
But if we had their evaluations?
I suppose that could help to influence a decision.
I mean, I'm not saying that like Connie or Travis or Rick shouldn't sit in on those meetings or whatever, you know, go over that and say what they think that those raises should be and stuff like that, but I'm saying, I, does it have to be blanket for everybody? And if it, if it does, that's fine, I'm just asking what everybody's opinion on it is.
I don't believe it has to be blanket, it's, you know, there's, everyone has individual merits, and, you know, maybe it just so works out that everyone deserves the, the same raise, but we don't do it that way at work, I'm sure you don't do it that way at your work, so I'm not sure why this would work any differently.
I think it should be done on merit.
Under the union, though, the minimum...
Yeah, right.
Is that we have to follow. However, beyond that, you know, I think we can choose to, to, to give different amounts.
I mean, I, I definitely sit here and I look at things, and I look at, you know, there's people getting grants, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants, and then, you know, there's people just going way above and beyond what their job duties are, and then there's other people who, while they're doing a good job at their job, they are doing their job, that they're getting paid for, but they're not doing anything above and beyond or extra, and so why would that person get the same five percent raise as the person who's like killing it?
You're exactly supporting my point, is that we would, you know, reward for merit and, you know, toe the line for, you know, for situations where they're not going over them.
I'm just surprised that the union would go along with treating union positions one different from another, because, but that's because of my experience, going back to Collins Radio over thirty years ago, they would not have tolerated that, and didn't.
And that's why I was asking if that's even a lot?
I don't know, Travis, Travis will have to check.
It's always said that when a contract's signed, you have to give what the contract states, there's nothing stopping for giving more, but I gotta find out about how you guys are gonna buy it, if you're gonna blanket across more or individual.
I mean, we know we can give everybody more.
Right.
I mean, we know that. It would just be if we could individualize it.
I'd have to ask them to see if we can individualize it.
You can't, we can't?
Something we could check into before you?
Well, and maybe if we, if we're doing that negotiation, and we're having conversations with the union anyway, maybe that would be a good...
I enjoy doing negotiations, Jen.
But it is convenient that the contracts come due.
Yeah, that's why I was asking about it, because I think it's good timing.
Anything else? We got a public hearing next meeting, right?
Next meeting, March ninth, yep.
All right, any new business?
Nope.
Correspondence?
Oh, we forgot the six A. Did you get the, I put the agenda back there? Oh.
There's a six A?
Six A.
I just grabbed it, it's out there.
Yeah, I added it Friday afternoon.
Okay.
Resolution, pro seven, two thousand and twenty, adopting the vision statement.
Oh, I saw that. Yeah, the Lisbon Future Committee has been working on our application to become one of Iowa's greatest places, and one of the requirements of that application is for the city to have a vision statement. I think I brought it to you guys once before, but we never took any formal action on it, so the vision statement that we came up with is on this resolution. If you guys would like to make any changes or any additions to that, we need to do it now, so we can actually approve this and how to, the application has to be submitted by May first, so we're, we're getting close. If we do get to become one of Iowa's greatest places, it opens up the door for a lot more grants.
So are we to open a public hearing about this right now?
No.
Or is this just for discussion right now?
This is just right now.
Maybe sign a public hearing?
No, we don't need a public hearing, but we...
As we could just say, make a motion to approve the vision statement?
Yep.
All right, there we go.
Motion? Listen, second?
And we would need a roll call.
Let's start with me. Hi. Stephanie?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
I don't want to go into correspondence.
I did, what you guys probably have been wondering for a while, what's happening with the old white church building down there, so I did put a copy of the last letter of correspondence that we sent to Mark, actually sent to them, so that'll give you an update there. Also, I gave you a copy of the estimate for the library wall, so you have an idea of what that was, that project is going to cost. I did give you the pie chart for where the taxes go, and also, just found out today, I had applied for a grant with the... So that'll give you an update there. Um, also, I gave you a copy of the estimate for the library wall, so you have an idea of, um, what that was, that project is going to cost. Um, I did give you the pie chart for where the taxes go. And also, just found out today, I had applied for a grant with the Iowa Foundation for Parks and Recreation to help with the cost of the two pieces of equipment that we're replacing at the city park. And we got the grant for a thousand dollars, so they'll be coming to one of our council meetings to present the check for that. And also, um, a lot of times, we, we have several bonds, and a lot of times, the bonds, um, we have to pay the interest through the entire fifteen years, twenty years, or whatever. We do have one bond that's callable, um, this year. Luckily, uh, the interest rates are way down. So I'm going to be working with our financial advisor to, um, call that bond, refinance it, and we should be able to save anywhere from seventy to a hundred thousand dollars on that interest on that bond. So that'll be really help. Um, the other thing that we're looking at right now, since the interest rates are so low and the sub cities are getting one point eight, one point nine five, um, we do get charged a fee for the bonding attorney and the financial advisor every time we do something like this. It could be anywhere from five to fifteen thousand dollars, which depends. We, um, are going to be financing for the water project, which is gonna be coming up soon, once we figure out if we're gonna get the five hundred thousand dollar grant again. And whatever funding we're gonna use, either bonds or SRF loan. So if we do these two, to refinance the one and do the other one together and get that bond at the rate instead of a four or five percent rate, we could save hundreds of thousands of dollars again. So I'm looking at, at option two. We did pay off two, well, not pay out, but pay down two different GO bonds. So I have them both expiring or maturing in two thousand twenty-three. So right now, we're looking at starting the water, um, one, but the first principal payment due after those are paid off. So we'll, you know, mature those, and then we'll start a new one, so it won't make the, us where we have four or five bonds do it, or principles or the bonds do at the same time, so. Got it structured right, so I'm, like I said, I'm just gonna be looking at the possibility of doing the financing for that a little early before we start the project, just to see how much we can save, so.
For five hundred thousand, if you get that grant, is that just basically up in this area?
Yes.
In Tampa, where we need to go out of that place?
We're looking at that.
Big old part of town.
It, it's that, it's, it's, it's in the survey area that we did, it has to be in that area, yep.
So, um, when we do that, but then we're gonna do everything, right?
Yes. Dave's getting close. Travis worked his tail off the last week, getting him stacks of information to help him prepare for that. So thank you Travis for doing that. Uh, Christina helped out too, they spent a lot of time, so Dave's working on that. Um, so we'll know, there's two open windows that we can apply for the, um, the grant. So if we don't get it the first time, we do have one other shot of, of trying to get that, so we'll see what happens.
And that, we'll be repaving, obviously, Washington Street up here. Will we repave Washington Street down here?
That's the hope.
It all depends, like I said, we gotta, there's probably gonna be two or three different phases on this. Um, the five hundred thousand with the grant is where we did all that. He said, we had to fill out a bunch of, I mean, the last five years, basically justify every bit of water we pumped, where it went. With you guys allowing us to have a leak detection company come in. All that stuff that we've been doing for the last ten years is gonna pay dividends for us now. So, we'll know more as soon as Dave gets his, his reports done.
Are we going to go Washington Street on that side of thirty to go?
That's, that's the hope. We stop at Cemetery Road, because when we made that change order, we fixed that intersection with the hope of getting battalion right there to go to...
Are you going, is that, I know we're not doing water main project, but are we going to look at repaving down like in front of Gwen's and, uh, some stuff from that?
That's just an overlay.
Yeah, that needs to be overlaid, or, well, will that be in that loan, that second loan?
It can be. All right, I know right now, we're looking at at least two point five million.
All right, okay, and another, have we looked at doing any sidewalks downtown?
No, not yet. We were hoping that, that would be something, if this project's gonna be contracted out, we were hoping that that would be something that the guys could start on and do pieces at a time.
What do you mean contracted out?
So if we're not gonna do water mains?
Yeah, but we're doing, we're not gonna touch those water mains, are we?
Probably not.
We were gonna do...
I know we're going to, I mean, that's all we already made a decision that we're going to do it.
I don't think we made a final decision, I think we talked about it, but we haven't made a final decision. We're waiting on, um, all the information back from Dave. Like I said, with the hopes now that we can get that grant again, it would really help.
And when we do, if we do a downtown sidewalk project, what, I don't know how wide those sidewalks are, any foot?
I think so, more wider than that.
Yeah, I mean, they're not even long down there.
So is the property owner responsible for half of it and the city half of it? Are we gonna do that?
That would, I mean, county and I have to go down and do some measure and then bring it to you guys, and you guys make the call on us. I don't wanna make the call on that, so.
It depends on where the property line is.
Right.
We would have to do some research on that, or have to.
I don't know what the best course of action is right now, but I don't think that what I hate to say either what. I know, I mean, on the four, four foot, on Chad Compton's old building, he had to pay for all that.
On the Jackson side?
On the Jackson side, so I'm assuming they would accept at least a four foot on the front. That leaves, there's a whole lot more than four foot in front of his, so.
Just kind of into that right now?
Yeah, I think so, I just, I think he started beating that hornet's nest for no reason.
Anything else, or?
No.
All right, city engineer report?
Like Connie said, uh, Dave's close with, uh, the Highway thirty, um, report. He's waiting to hear back on a couple of things, and then we also got a couple of culvers we need to get camera. So he's thinking by March, we should be able to have something completely wrapped up to go forward with on that.
Public service report?
Um, pretty much what you heard from Connie and me already. Um, the only other thing we've been doing is, we're working on trying to get some trees trimmed as long as the weather's holding out for us, so. All right, we're gonna hit the parade route first, to at least get that done. But then Washington and Main Street's gonna be our, our two biggest after that. So we wanna get all the trees up so that garbage trucks quit hitting them, or dump trucks quit hitting them, so. That's it.
City issues report? All right, issues report?
Um, we applied for the assistance firefighter grant, called the AFG grant. Uh, put in for twenty-two sets a year, it's about forty-nine thousand dollars. So we hired a grant writer to help put that together, 'cause it's pretty, uh, time consuming. And, um, hopefully we'll hear in the next few months about that. The cardiac monitor that I brought, you guys attention, uh, the budget you need. The association is willing to, um, fundraise for the ten thousand on our end. So as you probably saw, the flyer just went out for our St. Patty's Day dance, it was mentioned in there. Um, I also heard back from Zoll, they are willing to do the five-year no-interest loan, or repayment plan, whatever you wanna do. Uh, their first, they're gonna hopefully have here July first. The first payment of the ten thousand will be thirty days after that, and then we've got five years to pay it in full. So, some good news there.
So you did already order?
We will be, I'm gonna let, uh, I was hoping to have an email by now, but I don't have it yet. Um, Jeff's out of town, I'm hoping to get that email, give it to Connie to make sure when it's ready to go, then we'll get it ordered, 'cause it's gonna take a while for them to build it, 'cause they don't start, if somebody orders it, and a lot of these agencies that are, couldn't be in the same boat, so. We have...
Did you say ten thousand, we have to pay upfront, and then we finance it?
Thirty days after, um, so August first would be ten thousand. We'll work it out, whether it's our ten years or however, and I think you said you budgeted ten.
We did budget ten, yeah.
So...
So that would be available July first.
Yeah. So I think that's about it. Um, I guess just my two cents, I echo Stephanie's thoughts on Connie. I know that, uh, we talk probably daily about different things, and, uh, I appreciate all the work she does for me, and it makes my life easier, so if you guys could figure out what we can do to keep her around, that'd be awesome. Thanks.
Other question?
Yeah.
Is there some reason the association hangs on to donation checks for so long? People donate to you, and you spend months before you cash their check?
I could check with Brad, um, usually we, I mean, through the process of the business meeting, post on, usually it's about thirty days. But you...
It's grounded over two months.
Is this yours?
One case, yeah.
Okay. I can, uh, check with Brad, he's a special treasurer. It should be, yeah.
You can write them out, I don't really want to put them out.
Ten thousand, horrible, they're fundraising. No, you don't have to put it all up, but...
I'll do that.
We'll do a five-year end.
We'll see if you can pray for five years.
All right, city affairs report?
I already went over everything I have.
Mayor report, um, I know it's a little early already, but are we geared up to put a pool and stuff? Do we got stuff ordered for that, all painted and everything?
Uh, so, yes, we're working on it, we're getting, we're getting close. The line took quite a bit of damage this last year. We're trying to see if we can fix it. It's looking like it's actually deteriorating from the inside out. So the fiberglass that it was made out of is just brittle and basically crumbling. We're trying a couple of different things to see if we can get something to get us another year. But, uh, I wasn't in today for a full day, so Connie and I talked about it briefly this morning. We're hoping tomorrow we can revisit that conversation, get it in the right direction.
Because the other alternative is to replace it.
Or something else other than...
Yeah.
That was, oh, a unique, one-of-a-kind, um, thing that was created for us, and the quality just wasn't there. And trying to get with the company just to see if they were, what they can do.
There's no warranty on any of it.
Not anymore. What's it in there?
Six, two?
No, I don't think so.
Four?
Four.
Three?
Well, three, three and a...
Yeah, three and a month.
Three and a half months, 'cause the first year, we opened it only for a few weeks. So it, it should've lasted a lot longer than that, so.
And that's our second one. We actually sent that back after the first little short time, so...
Did they say how long they would normally, like, house, like, or maybe...
No, uh, but we're looking at other stuff now that is lower to the ground, that is designed for kids to crawl on, because that just wasn't designed for kids to crawl on, and it...
Or even like just the ones where, I mean, it's just the like holes and stuff where it just shoots out, you know? There's not really anything for them to climb on, because it's like it's getting, you know, like a splash pad you don't even talk about.
Like an actual splash pad thing where people will, they just shoot up and, yeah.
But I'm sure they'll find a way to destroy those too, so whatever.
Well, we're, we're working on that. We weren't ready to bring it to you yet, and we were hoping to have a solution before we brought it to you, but now you know.
All right, um, I would like also to, I know we're beating this to death, but the parking downtown, we need to, um, look at doing like winter months, you know what I mean? So we need to, we need to change our reservation.
Or just change it, I'll put that on the next agenda.
What are you thinking, like the north side, on the even days?
I'm thinking like they don't park downtown from November first to April first, or whatever.
You're not thinking no parking, you're thinking?
Oh, no, no, overnight parking, for like the winter months, and then like during the summer.
Instead of all year, he just wants to have no parking during the winter months.
But then Brandon, you mentioned, I believe it was you at the last council meeting, that the reason that that came into play a long time ago was for the fire protection. Was that you?
No, Doug. I thought it was for, my personal opinion, I thought it was for, uh, street cleaning, like, snow removal, but Doug thought it was for fire protection.
So are we not concerned about that anymore?
We'll figure it out, I mean, might be some damage, but we'll, the car's not gonna stop us, I guess, but, um...
But a whole row of them would be a pain in the butt, so.
Well, if you got a downtown fire daytime, it's gonna be a pain in the butt, you know, I mean...
I mean, I guess, why do they need to park there overnight?
Yeah. The only people that do usually are ones that have a clip in their apartment still.
Apartment tenants.
Can I give you the police's point of view as a police officer?
It's nice to allow people to park there, get a ride home, and not worry about a ten dollar ticket. Because there are people that, even though they spent a hundred dollars at the bar, will not pay ten bucks a parking ticket and drive home. So, I, I think it's, uh, if there's no snow in the forecast, I don't see a problem why they can't park down there, but...
And do you really think that that person, if there wasn't a parking ticket, would left there farther and not drove home? 'Cause I feel like that person's probably gonna drive regardless.
Do you have that option?
I don't know.
I don't think we really have that much problem with that happening downtown. I think where it happens the most is on the edge of town where there's apartments.
I think we just, whatever we do, and I, I'm open to whatever, but I think we just need to make it easy so that people understand it, and nobody can come back and say, well, it's too complicated for me to understand. 'Cause honestly, at this stage, I'm confused about where I can park and where I can't park overnight, and what days I can do it and what nights I can't, and so, and I voted on it, so...
You just can't.
Don't park downtown. And then, I mean, if you want to look at it, I mean, we can look at the odd even on the streets too.
I thought that was brought up at a previous meeting, that, uh, you know, if we were to allow overnight parking, and we did something like an odd even, I don't know if that completely addresses the, the prevention of drunk driving or anything like that, but...
That's a hard thing to figure out when you've had a few drinks.
Exactly, you're going on the right side, I don't think you're taking it on the north side.
Right.
I'm talking like the whole town. Isn't that, when people, when they do the odd even, it isn't that like the whole town?
That's so risky, but I will tell you that in the city of Marquette, during the winter months, it will say to you, there's a sign, very, lots of them, all the way down the main street, and it says, you can park on this side if it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. You can park on this side if it's, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Saturday, whatever. I mean, like, it's very well, there's signage. So you know exactly what side of the street you're supposed to be parking on, given what day it is.
But what's the point, though? Like, what?
That's for snow removal, is that?
That's in the winter months, yeah.
It's also for like people who live in the apartments or downtown. And that's what I'd like to continue to accommodate for, start for contact.
I mean, so apartments downtown are supposed to provide all-street parking.
Do all of them do?
They, they should, I mean, I know, I know Laura does. Laura has all-street parking. I know, I mean, mine, uh...
Your side one?
The apartment building on the corner, I talked to the landlord, and they do, but one of their tenants has two vehicles instead of one, so that person always parks on the all-street street.
And I, I know like Ross came when, like during the summer, parked on Main Street just because his apartment's up front. Instead of walking through or anything, which...
I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
I'll talk about that. Um, I just wanted to also congratulate those men, Wussling, this last weekend, had a great tournament of team and individuals. Got a solution to Kellham Hall, four-time state champ. Our last meeting, Amy said something about her vest being outdated. I talked to Rick the next day, he ordered, he had all three vests, he had three vests for all three officers.
Or they went in, yeah, I didn't, I know Jeff is, Jeff has, and I think Amy has too. So all three of those have been ordered, or should've been ordered. I think that's it.
Who wants to go first? Stephanie, I want you to go first.
Okay, well, I was gonna try to come up with a delicate way to say this, and I couldn't come up with a delicate way, so I'm just gonna be really brutal and honest right now. And I know I already said some stuff about it, but I'm gonna say it again, because I think it's really, really important. I do not know how we... do not know how we would function daily without Connie. I'm not saying that somebody down the line couldn't pick up the pieces if they had lots of training and could get very well-versed in what was happening. But at this stage in the game, with all the balls that we have rolling, I don't think we can manage it. And I think that, again, as a council and a mayor, we need to look at things and say, okay, we, we sit up here to make decisions that are in the best interest of the city. And I certainly think that I do that for the most part. When I look at things, I look at them and I think what's gonna be best for the city. But it's because of all the information that she gives me that I can make good decisions. I don't know this stuff and I don't think that any of you sitting up here probably know everything second nature like she does. And the other part of our job is to make sure that our city runs efficiently and that stuff gets done the way that it should get done. And you cannot run efficiently in a city if your departments and can't work together and interact with each other and have a good working environment. So I think that as we're looking at everything, not only do we need to figure out, you know, what we can do to, to solve this situation, but I think we need to make sure that all of our departments are being run the way that they need to be ran. And that as a whole, we are running together the way that it should be ran. And if we have issues that make it so that maybe it's not the best environment for any of our employees or an environment that they are enjoying being in, that we address those issues. And I think we need to get on that kinda stuff sooner rather than later. It's the perfect time of the year for all of that as we're looking at budget and raises and departments and all of that kinda stuff. What better time to kinda dig in and make sure that everything is running the way that it should be written? And that all of our employees are happy and that they feel like they're working in an environment that they can thrive in. Because if you are in an environment that you cannot thrive in, you do not wanna be in that environment. And if there's something happening that is causing that type of environment for one or any of our employees, that is also part of our job to fix that and get it right. And so I just really, really am asking you guys to hear what I'm saying and to think about it and to go home tonight and really, really think about it. Cause I know our job is to pay bills and vote on ordinances and stuff like that. But we have other jobs sitting up here as council that are not about that kinda stuff. And those parts of our job are just as important. And that's it.
Jeff?
Uh, just a couple of reminders that there's a talk on vaping coming up, uh, March fifth, Thursday, six thirty to seven thirty at the, uh, New Auditorium at Lisbon School. It's called What Parents Need to Know About Vaping, brought to you by RC Rail. And also the Friends of Lisbon Library are having their annual fundraiser trivia contest at Gwynn's. That'll be the twenty-first of March, a Saturday, uh, starting at six thirty. Doors will open about five thirty for signup. It's teams of up to eight people for eighty dollars a team. All goes to a good cause to help put on, uh, the various programs the library runs. That's all I have.
Sarah?
I don't have anything. I was gonna congratulate the Lisbon wrestlers as well.
Yeah.
They did a wonderful job this week. I was.
Coach, everybody.
Excited to be there to watch it all happen. So yeah, coaches, wrestlers, managers, cheerleaders, parents, all the fans that they, they came from all over to support this year. So that was good. Um, Connie, you're, you're being heard and Steph, so are you, by me. So, um, if there's anything that you wanted to sit down and talk to me about, I will be more than happy. We can chat anytime. That's all I have.
Me?
Uh, I also congratulate the Lisbon wrestling, uh, team. Um, amazing, uh, performance, of course. Um, I was there for Carter's four time and I couldn't make it for, um, for Kayles unfortunately. But, um, congratulations guys. Awesome job. Um, and I don't have any more.
Everybody out there? Me and Karen.